And we will call the city of the, the city council regular meeting to order. If you'll stand with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you may be seated. Welcome to the City of West Melbourne Regular Council Meeting tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any topics, whether it is on tonight's agenda or any other issue that is important to you. Each person that wishes to speak should complete a speaker's card, which are located by the front door, and submit it ahead of time to the city clerk, who sits on the end of the dais normally. After you have been recognized to speak, please use the microphone at the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record. Please address all your comments to the city council rather than to individual members. Direct all questions to the chair. Speakers will be given up to three minutes. There are no presentations or proclamations. There are no modifications. We'll go right to public hearings, which is residency ordinance 2025-05, second reading. Mr. Rhodey. It's yours.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before you this evening is the second reading of the residency ordinance for, which has effect for local, local elected officials. And so I'm happy to answer any questions or comments, or have the attorney read the, read the motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And this is ordinance number 2025-05 in ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Florida, relating to residency of city council members, providing for legislative findings and intent, amending section 22.2, providing a requirement for candidates to provide a sworn notarized affirmation of residency, creating section 22.4, providing residency criteria, creating section 22.5, providing for investigation of residency, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton, did you have a question?
No questions, Mayor. Going to make a motion.
All right, thank you. Want to go ahead and make the motion?
I don't know. We got to ask anybody from the public first, don't we?
I don't have any speaker cards. Did anyone, no one from the public wishes? We've opened the public hearing, we've closed it. Just looking for a motion.
Make a motion. We approve second reading ordinance number 2025-05 as written.
Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor of the residency ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, item B, employment screening ordinance, second reading.
And Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-08. We discussed it last week. It takes away some of the parts of the old employee screening ordinance that listed each facility and job title individually, and instead basically makes anybody that has access to private areas of the, the city that aren't open to the general public as being somebody who's eligible for employment screening, and that does include members of the city council. And if I may, read ordinance number 2025-08.
Please.
This is ordinance 2025-08 in ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Florida, relating to fingerprinting of employees, revising section two dash eleven, amending criteria for employment screening for employment with the city, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampton? All right, any other comments on the subject? Any questions, anything? All right, motion, Mr. Frampton?
Make a motion. We approve second reading ordinance 2025-08 as written.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gaylord?
I will second their motion.
All right, thank you, Mr. We have a motion from Mr. Frampton, a second from Mr. Gaylord. All those in favor of ordinance 2025-08, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, five C.
Good eve, good evening, council and
Good evening.
Audience, I am Kristi Fisher, the planning director. The first item is agenda item five C. You have two annexations on your agenda tonight. This one happens to be at 3010 Dairy Road. And the property history, the, the property is shown in red. So it's, so it's two red rectangles that are south of the city canal, on the west side of Dairy Road. There's an area that is unincorporated county, and you've got Fairmont subdivision to the north, Whispering Winds subdivision to the south. And that, those areas are sort of in a shaded blue. That, that's sort of the, the area. It's an older area of town. But in 2021, the city acquired these properties. The two parcels together are about one and a half acres. There was an old house on the property, that's why it has an address, that was demolished. The property is vacant, so it's got, you know, trees on it, but nothing else really at this time. The city is sort of land banking this, meaning they're holding it for potential future utility improvements, whether that's water sewer, stormwater, anything that the city may need, even items related to the city canal. As we said, that property is next to an existing city canal, not a Melbourne Tillman or County Canal, it is a city canal. Just like we do with any annexation, we send notices out to surrounding property owners. The city has received no phone calls, no emails, nothing about these properties. And as with all annexation requests, even those that are city initiated, we have to look at the adjacency, and the properties have to be adjacent to our city limits. We talked about that. The other test is to make sure we're not creating an enclave, and by the statutory requirements, we're not creating an enclave. It's slightly reducing that pocket, you know, that we have of the unincorporated area. We have had other property owners in that area ask us for annexing, but changed their mind. I think it was two years ago, we had the property at the south end that was asking us, but then they changed their mind, and I believe they sold the property. So a lot of the, the reason for selling the properties to the south would be to connect to our city water and sewer. We also, by floor statutes, have to do an urban services assessment, so my staff laid out a nice slide here about, you know, the different services, a logical extension of adjacent city limits, stormwater. If this was a private development, we would assess it at the time of development, and then the, the fire and the police services. For the conference of plans, so that would be sort of part B, that would come up in another two meetings, utility improvements, you know, in anything that the city would do. The second bullet is that there aren't any utility improvements yet, but anything that we would do, if you look at the right side of the screen, we talk about the future land use map of the conference of plan, and we would have to revise that map to designate the property as institutional, city-owned, so it would have the institutional designation. And with a zoning map, the property would have to be classified as P1, and that's the acronym for that institutional zoning. So it would have the, the correlating zoning and future land use. So in conclusion, this is a, a photo of the, the property. If you were standing on Dairy Road, looking into it, you can see some of the trees beyond the power lines. What we're recommending to city council is, if you all are so inclined, to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-12, annexing the city-owned properties located at 3010 Dairy Road. And if I could ask the city attorney to read the title, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 2025-12 in ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Verratt County, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition parcels of land approximately 1.51 plus or minus acres in size located at 3010 Dairy Road and as more fully described herein, finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law, amending the corporate boundaries to the city to provide for incorporation of the real property described herein, providing for filing of the revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Are there any speaker cards on this item? Make it, all right, we'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of, of the council? Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion. We approve first reading ordinance number 2025-12 as written.
All right, thank you. Ms. Maguire?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Cramp, Mr. Frampton, and a second by Ms. Maguire. All those in favor of passing ordinance 2025-12, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, next item, item D, annexation of property located on the east side of Columbia Lane.
Okay, now going to the other side of the city limits. The applicant is Floor and Decor, the representative is here as the applicant, and this is agenda item five D. So if, if you go to I-95 in the west side of, of I-95, north of US Highway 192, you've got that small road called Columbia Lane. This property actually lays off of Columbia Lane between that and I-95. It's south of the Dunes subdivision, so it's also south of where you see some industrial development that's actually in the county. So you'll see sort of the warehouses and whatnot. It's, so it's not quite as far up as Dunes, but it just kind of, kind of gives you that idea when you're driving south, there's a little stretch of property that's still not developed, and one of these properties is, is what we're talking about tonight. So the property information, the owner is, and the owner applicant is 95 West Floor and Decor. The acreage is 14.35 acres. We talked about the property being vacant. They would like to build their retail store here, and the property not being in the city limits. It does have some unusual easements. Everything shown in yellow are the power line and gas easements. The Columbia Lane, you know, would be their sole access. Obviously, they're not going to have access directly to US Highway 192 or to I-95. The, the main thing to know about that easement area is it's, it's something that the applicant has to figure out. You know, they have to figure out how they're going to build around that. It's very clear that with those easements, they cannot put buildings, but the questions that they still have to get answered, not something the city has to help them find the answers, is whether those other companies are going to let them put, you know, the, the pavement and the parking that they want to put in the stormwater. So those are questions they still have to have answered. They do want city utilities, and that's the reason for annexation. And just like the previous request, we sent out annexation notices to surrounding property owners. We did not receive phone calls, emails, or visits from anybody surrounding the property. Though, just like the previous annexation, we have to have the adjacency in order to annex in the Dobbs equipment, does provide us the most immediate adjacency, and this does not create an enclave according to the enclave definitions and floor statutes.
Kristi, do we know how much of the property is not encumbered by easement?
No, but the, the applicant might be able to tell you that.
Thank you.
Urban services assessment, this is one where they are going to build, so they do need to go through the stormwater utilities and have that be assessed in terms of what they need to do. So again, that, that's part of the questions that they have to answer in order to build on this. The conference of plan, so again, in another few meetings, this will come back to you, and this is where, you know, to be a retail store, they have to have a commercial future land use designation in the city's conference of plan, and then to do the type of business they want, at the size that they want, they have to have, the CP stands for the commercial parkway. So that would be the zoning that staff would recommend to the planning and zoning board and to you all. So in conclusion, what we're recommending is that council consider approving the first reading of ordinance 2025-11, annexing the property 14.35 acres located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of US Highway 192. And if we could have the attorney read the title of the ordinance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 2025-11 in ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Verratt County, Florida, annexing by voluntary petition a parcel of land approximately 14.35 plus or minus acres in size located on the east side of Columbia Lane, north of Highway 192, and as more fully described herein, finding that the area being annexed is reasonably compact and contiguous to the city, that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave, and that the annexation of the property otherwise complies with Florida law, amending the corporate boundaries of the city to provide for the incorporation of real personal property described herein, providing for filing of revised city boundaries with the Department of State, providing for repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any speaker cards? All right, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll close the public hearing. Are there questions?
The applicant is here.
Yeah, there are questions for Kristi? Yes, or the applicant, yes. The applicant, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Natalia Temovisova. I'm with Floor and Decor Land Development, Land Development Manager with Floor and Decor. I'm here to answer any of your
Mr. Frampton?
So I was curious of how much property there is not encumbered by the easements?
Not encumbered. Well, I, I would say most of?
Maybe, maybe you can just answer. What's, what's your plan?
Okay, yes, that, that probably, because I never looked at it from the standpoint of percentage of what's covered by the easement, because what you see in yellow is actually two different types of easements. One is the Florida Gas Transmission, FGT, and the other is Florida Power and Light Company, FPL. And they have different easements, and they have different restrictions within the easement. So the area in white is what you see, that is free of easements. So the very western portion of the yellow part is, that runs north-south, is the gas company easement. It's about, is a 26-inch pipe that is underground, high, high-pressure gas that has restrict, the easement has restrictions that does not allow to build buildings or structures, but has no limitations on parking lot. There's certain restrictions on the deep-rooted plants, such as trees and large shrubs, but not so much for ground cover and, you know, the grass. That said, we still have to work with the company, enter into agreement, and figure out under which conditions they would allow us to build the parking lot that we anticipate building there. The first request was to provide, perform and provide a soft dig survey of the pipe to illustrate exactly where, how deep the pipe runs across the property, as they did not have that information. So we performed that survey last week, got results, and submitted back to the company. They are reviewing it. We need to give them some time to respond to that information, and we'll go from there. Now, the FPL easement doesn't really have restrictions, but pretty obvious, they have the power lines, so we are at the point, we're trying to figure out what is the voltage and a height of these poles, because that's essentially what will dictate any potential restrictions of, that will be applicable for
Are you planning on putting a structure back there, or, or is your structure just mainly going to be on the southwest corner of this property?
Correct. So the building will be completely outside of easements in, in the white area, but the parking lot would be partially in the white area and then further into the easement. So that is the part we're working with both utility companies.
And the narrow stretch that runs north and south, is that going to be like drainage or?
So the, the white portion towards the northwest portion of the property, that is where we plan our detention facilities, stormwater management detention facility, that will consist of two parts. One is the filtration part, and then the other is, is actual storage of the water, and that would cover the needs for the entire site.
Thank you.
So the building would be down in this corner. That, that's what they've indicated, and there would be parking on some of this, parking and driveways. That, that's what their proposal is. They've had a, a pre-application meeting with us, and that's what they indicated.
Now, are parking lots require some trees and stuff, if I'm correct? So how's that gonna, how's that gonna affect being in the easement area?
Well, they're gonna have to ask for waivers, but more than likely, we don't just say, okay, you're reducing that quantity of trees from, I don't know, 10, 20 trees to zero. We probably would say, put them somewhere else.
Put them somewhere else, right? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I turned the wrong light off. Do we know what the current tree coverage is of this area, looking at that, those easement pieces in particular?
Yeah, it's hard to see. With the FPNL
Right, that's why I was asking.
I can tell you with the FPNL main, main transmission line, they really don't want anything that can grow within 19 feet of that, so it's mostly sawpaw meadow that exists there now. The gas one, I, I don't know, but I know that there is some, there's a lot of the Brazilian pepper, unfortunately, along I-95. Yes. But on the property, the part that has the gas line, are, are there trees there?
I think the gas line is pretty clear, but left and right, that is lots of palm trees and, you know, large, larger trees that would have to be relocated.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for either Kristi or for the applicant? Looking for a motion here. All right, we don't, Ms. Volz?
Yes, I will make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-11.
All right, Mr. Frampton?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Volz, and we have a second from Mr. Frampton. Of those in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance 2025-11, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries six one, with Ms. Maguire voting no.
That was Gaylord.
I'm sorry.
I know they sounded alike.
I knew it came from that direction, and I knew it wasn't Mr. Frampton, Mr. Gaylord voting no. All right, thank you very much. All right, next item. This will be the public forum. Anyone wishes, I have no cards for the public forum, move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, Mr., Ms. Volz?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. We have a second by Mr. Frampton. We have a second by Mr. Frampton. Thank you. I had my mind reading, thinking, going, I saw the light, I saw the light, exactly. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Action agenda, approval of group insurance plan.
Evening, Mayor and council. I will turn this over to our HR Director, Jennifer Kern, represented by our, our health insurance broker, to walk us through the 2526 health insurance plan and the changes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. The city's insurance broker, Highland, has negotiated rates from all of our current providers for the city employee benefits for the 2025-2026 benefit year. Brian Dinklage with Highland, he is a managing partner with Highland, is here this evening for a presentation. We have a short presentation for you and to answer any questions that you may have. Following the presentation, we do recommend that council adopts resolution number 2025-06, approving the city's group insurance plans for the 2025-2026 plan year. Brian?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
After careful review with the city manager and the West Melbourne HR team, it has been our recommendation for the 2025-2026 plan year to renew with Cigna. As you can see, the renewal this year is an eight percent increase on the renewal. We know initially this increase was calling for a 21. It was issued around an 18% increase, and we were able to negotiate this rate increase down to an eight percent. No plan changes for the year, some slight financial impact changes to the city. I believe that's the next page. So this is the current payroll deductions monthly paid by the employee as well as payroll, and then it breaks out for per employee per month for the city, and you can see that it is about an eight percent increase, kind of spread out evenly across the board. With those changes that were being made, we are decided to change after four years with principal dental. We did receive increases, we've received slight increases over the years with principal. We decided this year to be able to make a change to Lincoln Dental. It was about an eight percent increase. We got negotiated down to principal. However, moving over to Lincoln, they reduced the rates by five percent, and we were able to lock in a two-year rate guarantee for the city by moving over to Lincoln Dental. The vision plan will remain with principal with the VSP network. The basic life and accidental death for the employees will remain with Lincoln Financial. The long-term disability plan that is currently covers 40% of the earnings for the city will remain with Lincoln Financial as well. Moving along, the short-term disability will remain with Lincoln Financial. The voluntary life, long-term disability will remain with Lincoln Financial, and voluntary life in AD&amp;D with Lincoln Financial. Very small financial impacts to the employees on these voluntary plans. And then with some other type of products, we have the Ameri Flex FSA plan for the employees to be available, as well as Colonial Life and Reliance Standard, and none of these plans have changed. None of the rates have changed through the last plan through MetLaw. So the only impact obviously is the medical plan and the dental plan as well, but with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for the app? Any questions? Nothing? All right, Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion, we adopt resolution 2025-06 as written.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Your question, Ms. Adams?
Thank you. It's more so for Ms. Curran, if you don't mind. Do we have any feedback from our employees in terms of their usage of the current health plans, their likes, dislikes, things like that?
No negative feedback, I'll say that, at least not brought to my attention. It's been positive feedback. The, the switch to Cigna and staying with Cigna has been a very positive, even, even for myself, and my usage is, it's been great. It's been improved over the years, so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Frampton, a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor of adopting resolutions 2025-06, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Eight B has been withdrawn for the Space Coast Town Center. We'll move on to eight C, stormwater evaluation in Hollywood Estates neighborhood. Mr. Rhodey?
Thank you, Mayor, deputy mayor, council. Before you this evening is a scope of service for doing some initial engineering evaluation for Hollywood Estates. The City of West Melbourne, because of our size, we're not large enough to directly get CDBG funds, so we're part of the pool, and so that makes us eligible And so that makes us eligible every three years to apply for CDBG funds, up to $750,000. And with Melbourne Estates project being finished and closed out, we're now eligible to apply for our next CDBG grant to help flood risk reduction. A neighborhood that we've talked about for several years needing some attention is Hollywood Estates. One of the items that we need is this task order to evaluate and come up with a set of, a set of rough plans, not full construction drawings, but just rough schematics so that we can apply for the grant and be able to show the impact that it will improve to the neighborhood. One of the items that we initially discovered with Hollywood Estates, obviously I wasn't here when Hollywood Estates was built, just for the record, nor was Tom Bradford, just for the record. When Hollywood Estates was built and installed, it is public roads, so it is a public streets. The streets drain to the center and then the center has catch basins that run to the canal. And so there's no stormwater ponds in Hollywood Estates. The other challenge is, for some reason, the inlets are only in half of Hollywood Estates. So the south half of Hollywood Estates has stormwater inlets that drain to the canal. The north half of Hollywood Estates drains to the south half of Hollywood Estates. It doesn't have any stormwater in the road. Additionally, the stormwater that is in existence, the stormwater infrastructure that is on the south half of Hollywood Estates is undersized. And so maybe, you know, we'll go with the assumption that it was built to some kind of standard and specification of that day, but that is no longer the standard or specification for stormwater. And so by working with IEG, we're looking to have them put together a plan and then show the impact of that plan. There's many stages to applying for the CDBG, including working with Hollywood Estates, outreach meetings, and then having them sign documents acknowledging the CDBG grant program. And so there's, there's many steps to this process, but certainly the first one is evaluating what, what's the best strategy, probably something similar to Melbourne Estates, put in right-sized stormwater and then try to create either some kind of retention or some kind of improvement to filter that water before it gets to the canal. And so this evening, we're looking for authorization for me to sign and execute the task order with IEG Infrastructure Engineering Group.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at our staff report, this will ultimately give us a master plan report and then prioritizing recommendations, things like that, with a note that a future task order is probably going to be needed to move this forward. The funding that we're expecting, how far will that funding go? Is it from project planning, evaluation to completion?
So the, this initial task order is probably an item that the stormwater utility will have to pay for. But once we get in the pipeline for the CDBG funding, that covers design and construction. Very similar to Melbourne Estates, we're kind of following that same process of first evaluating, seeing if there's significant improvement that can be achieved, how that would be achieved, what's the best, you know, kind of best bang for the buck, and then going to, getting into the CDBG process of getting another grant to follow through with the order, to follow through with the improvement. Now, the one challenge, unlike Melbourne Estates where we are able to do the whole project, the stormwater portion, very close to the 750 max, the 750 is probably not going to get all of Hollywood Estates. We'll probably have to phase this and do one phase, wait to be eligible again and do the second phase.
So total timeline, since this would be impacting Hollywood Estates, what would that be looking like?
So construction is always about 18 months for the improvements. Then we might have to wait another three years to do the second half to finish the project. But during, in between that gap, it would be back to normal. There wouldn't be any construction or any disruption of the residents.
And I know you said community meetings are part of that process, but looking that this would be something the city would be fronting, at least from the stormwater perspective at the beginning, have, has anyone from staff reached out to Hollywood Estates? Are we getting, I mean, this sounds like a great project for them, but I just want to make sure this is something that the residents say, this is going to be good for us.
We've had Hollywood Estates on the CIP plan for several years, out into future years. And so the residents, you know, some residents are aware, I'm sure not every resident is aware. And then we did reach out to the quote-unquote ownership group of Hollywood Estates to let them know, because we were in there doing some soft digs and evaluating the system. And so if this is a go, we'll start the outreach to the community and start outlining the things that we will need in order to accomplish this. We'll have to do our, very similar to Melbourne Estates, we'll have to do our door-to-door income assessment for CD, to show that we're CDBG eligible. We'll have to have several community meetings and at some point in time, the community will have to then send a letter saying that they're in support of the project.
Okay, thank you. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a task order with Infrastructure Engineering Group as written.
All right, thank you. Mr. Frampis?
I'll second that with a question.
What's your question, please?
Do we really think we can get this done in two phases? Because a million and a half doesn't seem like an awful lot for somebody that doesn't have the infrastructure on half of the property.
Yeah, where the infrastructure isn't in, the cost is going to be pretty significant because we have to put those catch basins in. Where the infrastructure is in, the upside is we save the money on the catch basins, we just have to redo the size of the pipes in order to accommodate the flow and so.
But aren't we, we're going to have to move some of the piping too, right?
The piping, well, yeah.
They're all going to have to be.
But, but the catch basins, we'll be able to use the same catch basins. And so we should have some cost savings there. That's part of the reason we want to engage with the engineers, try to find out how this would phase and have the least amount of impact, but still, when the first phase is done, still get bang, you know. In other words, not have phase one be an improvement that only is in effect when phase two gets completed.
Are we assuming that, are we, I mean, you're going to have to dig up the middle of the street as well, right? I mean, so parking is going to be an issue for the residents to get to their properties, right? So.
Yeah, the, the good news is in some of the places, you know, there, there is the ability to get to people's units, people's houses. Because of how Hollywood Estates is designed, you can get from, you can get.
Other direction.
Yeah, north or south or east or west. But definitely when you're digging up the middle of the road, it's a construction project.
And I know, I'm sure they're going to welcome the project, maybe not during the project, but there's been many, I've talked to many residents over there and, and they really hate the way the water lays and everything, so.
It was just done at a time that, you know, I'm just going to go with the assumption that that was done to those standards at that day, but it's clearly, it's clearly lacking stormwater control.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Adams, a second from Mr. Frampis. All those in favor of approving resolution 2025-07, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, thank you. Item D, Ms. Chief, Vista, sale of canine German Shepherd Ghost. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, members of council, here tonight to request approval. We're talking about the retirement of canine Ghost and the requested sale to Sergeant Kencels, who is canine Ghost's handler, for the transfer of assets from the city to the, to the handler for his care for the rest of the dog's life. So as you're aware, or as you might have seen in the memo, the Ghost was born in 2018. We took possession of him in 2019, served the city really well for the last six years. A couple of years ago, started having some significant health issues. We were able to make it through that, little bit of recurrence of that and ongoing issues with that, but it's, it's time to retire Ghost. Served us well, but at the end of his serviceable life. And so what we are requesting is to pass and adopt a resolution declaring Ghost to be surplus property and authorize the city manager to sell Ghost to Sergeant Kencels for the sum of $1.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. I'd make a motion that we pass and adopt resolution number 202505.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
All right, thank you very much.
But I did have a quick question.
What question, please?
What's the average working lifespan for a canine?
It's anywhere from six to eight is probably the average. I've seen as little as five and I've seen up to 10, you know, but it, they're pretty aggressively worked out there between training and actual deployments that you're not going to generally get them to be to beyond age nine or 10 is kind of the limit that I've seen.
Both did a great representation of the department in our classes for the community, so it's been nice to see our working dogs. But I was just curious in terms of looking at, are we then looking at a replacement and what that timeline might look like?
Well, we do have a budget request for replacement for, in next year's budget. And yeah, canine Ghost has made some, not only presented a class as well, but made some really significant cases for us as well that has taken some people and drugs off the street. So really, really good service for us.
Do we, I don't know, do we recognize a retired working canine retirement?
We will do, do something. Obviously, we needed to make sure that, that this passed before we would do anything.
Understood, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volz, followed by Mr. Frampis.
Yeah, I just have a question about if we purchase another dog, how much does those things cost?
So Ghost was purchased for, I believe, $11,500. Nowadays, they're running about $13,000 for a, usually a one to one and a half year old dog that's been imprinted on certain, you know, certain drugs and other things like handle, handler protection and article searches. And then, of course, once they're brought over to us, then there's about 400 hours, 400 hours of additional training that the officer and the dog specifically go through just to be able to work together.
Oh, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So I asked the chief a bunch of questions about this. I did a little research, I got the medical information from the dog for the last year and I got actually all three years, the last three years. So definitely the dog is, is ready to retire. And like you said, I did the research, six to eight years is normal. I know we have one going on 10 years, so we're getting a lot of use out of that. It's definitely starting to, you know, cost us more money than the value that we have in it. So, you know, all for letting this dog retire. If the dog wasn't ready to retire, I did ask the chief a couple of questions, they would have passed it on to a new handler since the, the old handler was promoted. So if that ever happens in the future, just know that it doesn't stay with the supervisor.
Yeah, certainly. You know, if a dog is two, three, four years old and still has many years of serviceable life and not these health issues, you know, and if there's, someone leaves the agency or is promoted to a point that, you know, they have to serve in a different role, you can recycle them into new handlers. So we certainly, in that case, we would, would have considered it. It's just this dog is at the end of his serviceable life. And with the sergeant promotion that did happen almost two years ago now, we've really tried to extend it as long as we could without having to go through that transfer and then an additional, another 400 hours with the new handler. So this really made the best sense to do it this way.
Thanks, Chief.
Ms. McGuire, followed by Ms. Volz.
So then this leaves us with two canines?
That's correct.
And then you said we're looking, you're looking to get another one in the next year or two. So have we determined that three is kind of the, the set number for the police force?
Yeah, you know, they, we are, we're always looking at that. They've contemplated four in the past, but at this point, we're only recommending the, staying at three at this point. We seem to have good coverage between, right now, we have one on the 6A to 6P, one on the 6P to 6A, and one on a noon to midnight shift.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Volz.
Yes, if, if, have we ever had that opportunity of passing a dog on to a new handler?
So I'm not 100% sure of the history here, but I have seen it happen and happened successfully before. I just, I don't, I'm not aware of it happening recently here, but I know it has happened in many other agencies.
Mr. Rhodey, do you know?
I don't know the history, past maybe five or six years ago, so not to my knowledge here, but in past communities, we have had that. We have had officers who either had to relocate or mutually separated with the department, you know, two or three years into their handling time. And then you do, you know, the upside is you get to reuse the dog. The downside is you lose an officer for quite some time because usually that training, a bulk of that training is done at their, at the, the dog facility where they have to retrain, retrain the dog with the handler.
That's what I was going to ask.
So you do lose, you do lose a little chunk of coverage while they're, I believe the word is imprinting.
Yep.
While they're imprinting with the new handler.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. There's no more questions. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Bentley, a second from Ms. Adams. All those in favor of approving resolution 202505, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Norfolk Signal Project, Mr. Petroni, who I did see was here, but I don't see him now.
I, thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor. I asked Mark not to attend tonight because I, he's been very obviously involved in this process, but with, with the action item this evening, based on last council meeting, moving forward with the D.R. Horton agreement to take over the signalization of Shallow Creek in Norfolk, I didn't, didn't need him to come here tonight to request that, that we reject the bids and then move forward, obviously with the D.R. Horton agreement, for D.R. Horton to implement traffic control at Shallow Creek and Norfolk.
All right, thank you very much. So we're looking for a motion to reject all bids.
Reject the bids.
Mr. Gaylord?
I'll make the motion to reject all bids with a question from Mr. Rhodey.
Absolutely.
Wait, wait, let me get a second and then we'll ask the question. Ms. McGuire?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gaylord, your question, please.
What's the process on D.R. Horton's end? You know, once we reject these bids, are they going to put out a new RFP for the signalization?
So private entities don't have to follow the same government procedures. And so how they acquire a contractor to implement their improvement is a cost control on their Just like, you know, just like when, I guess we can use the example of D.R. Horton building the first two lanes of Norfolk, you know, they didn't have to publicly bid that road. They, they had to build it to our standards and, and we reviewed that and inspected that as we would with whatever they end up doing at Shallow Creek in Norfolk. But as far as, you know, the local government rules for spending tax dollars, they don't have to follow those same type of rules.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gaylord, a second from Ms. McGuire. All those in favor of rejecting, Mr. Frampis, sorry, I didn't see your light. Thank you.
Mr. Rhodey, I didn't know if you wanted to touch on the last memo we got from D.R. Horton, which kind of plays into all this, but not necessarily, but.
Yeah, kind of a side item. We, I did forward an email from the D.R. Horton group that evaluated the roundabout, the four-lane roundabout versus the four-lane signalization. And one of the issues that we had contemplated early on and mentioned, but, you know, obviously their engineering team took a new look at it, is the challenge of a four-lane roundabout at that intersection requires so much lead-in and easement and property acquisition to get those lanes to all fit in that area and/or shift away from the current subdivision that a four-lane was just, ended up being non-feasible. Now, we have a meeting with them Friday to discuss that and get better details from their engineering group, but he did want to forward that along that, because he knew it was an item that was discussed here at the council as to roundabout versus signalization. And right now, their, their engineering team is just seeing too many challenges with the roundabout there, so.
Pretty much the same reason we said.
Which is a very similar reason why it didn't work for the. Which, which is a very similar reason why it didn't work for the city.
All right, thank you. We still have a motion on the floor from Mr. Gaylord, and a second from Ms. McGuire. All those in favor of rejecting all bids, please signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, motion carries seven zero. All right. Item F, council reports. Mr. Frampton?
I only had the one thing last, this past Friday, we had the mayor's breakfast, and I just wanted to compliment the mayor on a, on a great job that she did up there and, you know, made West Melbourne look good, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Adams?
I will agree with Mr. Frampton's remarks that you did a job well done representing the city mayor, so thank you for that. I did attend that event as well. I did want to make a couple notes. We do have quite a few different graduations happening across Brevard County. So just a reminder is we have students that are finishing school, looking potentially at either internships, jobs, or potentially college for them. We have different businesses in West Melbourne that are looking for people to get plugged into those kinds of jobs. And I know many of those people serve on different advisory boards for our city. So I wanted to remind everybody, if you know of a student graduating, or you have the opportunity to speak at a, a school as the students are finishing up, just reminding them that we have some great businesses in West Melbourne that might be a good fit for them. On that note, just to follow up with the mayor's question from the last meeting, I did turn in the, what I consider to be the first draft of the youth advisory board application that I've created to Mr. Rowdy. So going to wait for some staff feedback on that to make sure I didn't miss anything based on their notes, and to make sure it kind of aligns with the rest of what our advisory boards look like. And then, once I get feedback on that, the goal is to kick it out to the rest of council for any additional feedback. The Space Coast League of Cities that we had this month, the two speakers that were joint was the Space Coast Health Foundation and the Fire Rescue, specifically looking at the hospital that closed in Rockledge and what that does in terms of response times for our community. And the one big piece that I had wanted to bring back to council was they are, have created, and they're going to be sending out a graphic that helps us educate our residents about which type of calls need to go to which type of response, basically. And they broke it down into urgent cares, emergency rooms, et cetera, because they gave us the data, and it, it was a little bit shocking that people will call for emergency response or ambulance transportation for things like they can't sleep, or a finger that hurts, things like that. And that was data within the past few months. So just thinking about, you know, the, how the hospital closing and things like that impact our residents, I think educating them on those types of things might be beneficial for our greater community, knowing that the hospital isn't located in West Melbourne, but we have residents that utilize these resources. So I wanted to bring that to your attention if you had missed that meeting. Just a reminder that June 9th is the next League of Cities meeting, and that's joint hosted by West Melbourne, and we will be at Promise in Brevard, where we're going to be recognizing our league's scholarship recipients. So if you plan to attend, make sure you add that to your calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Volz?
Or if you have to call 911 for your dog because he's stuck behind the dryer. That was the worst phone call I ever, ever had to make. I was like, I don't want to do this. But I had to. But anyway, yeah, I was at that meeting on Friday, and Andrea, you did an awesome job. And we're like, where'd she come up with all this stuff, you know? And so you just, you just made us look good and made the other ones look, eh.
I think that goes, I think that goes to Megan. I had a lot of help from Megan.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. Well, you're not taking any blame for it. Okay, well, we, we're just, well, okay, go with that. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Volz. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. It's funny. I did attend, as I think everybody did, from the city council, the mayor's breakfast. And as everybody else has said, it's always a fun event, or it's kind of a funny event. And as they said, you did a really great night. And a couple of the things that you joked about were real time changes to whatever you had prepared coming in, because they were just things that we talked about right before the meeting. So I thought, that's pretty quick to, to come up with real time changes that were, went over really well. So good job on that. I also attended the West Melbourne Businesses Association meeting along with Mr. Rowdy and perhaps others. And they had a small business, in fact, a council member, Kenny Johnson, presented his business to the committee. So that was an interesting event, as Diana talked to, went to the Space Coast League of Cities and did our, did our work there. And remind everybody that later this week, we have the, where we're going to honor the folks that have volunteered for the city of West Melbourne. So want to have a good turnout for that, to recognize those who helped serve our city. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gaylord?
I want to echo the sentiments of the others on the council and say that I think you did a very good job at the mayor's breakfast.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your sense of humor. It was very amusing. I also wanted to say that I appreciate the reminder from Councilmember Adams about not dialing 911 for my finger when it hurts. And that's all I have from my reports.
All right, thank you, Ms. McGuire.
I will also echo what everybody's saying about Friday's breakfast. I've heard about it for many years in the community, but this was the first time I've actually gone. And I will say that what everybody's told me about it being an extremely fun event to go to, and just the things that you hear and the things that you learn while you're there, it is definitely one of those events that I will probably be attending in the future again.
I, I hope so.
Other than that, that is all.
All right, thank you. So yes, obviously, I attended that. And I had intending, playing it just straight. I wasn't going to pick on anybody. I was just, it was my first time presenting. I was just going to be nice and just as sweet as I am, but I just couldn't do it. I just had to come out, yeah, I just had to snipe and snark just right along with the rest of them and get in the mud and the blood and the beer. So I just had to do it. So I, I do have that sarcasm gene. So thank you. It meant so much to me to see all of you out there, the support from, from all of this group being there, Mr. Rowdy being there. Mr. Carey, were you there, I don't recall?
No, by the time I tried to get a ticket, they were sold out, so.
Oh, all right.
I wasn't able to.
But you were there in spirit, I know. But just the, the, the team of having my whole group here for support, that really, that made it, that made it very easy to do.
You know, I think we were the only council that everybody was there.
Yeah, we were.
Yeah, there was hardly any council people there. I was.
Some didn't even have their mayor show up. They had a stand-in for their mayor. So like Cocoa Beach, I mean, Cocoa, not Cocoa Beach, yeah. So thank you very, very much for all of you coming out there and supporting me. So I'm looking forward next year. I'm already planning, actually. I'm already planning for what I'm going to do next year. I'm going to have a video next year. So I'm, I'm already planning. So thank you very much. Management reports, Mr. Rowdy?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, just one item, or two items. Thank you for mentioning it. Deputy Mayor, Thursday, we have the Committees and Commissions Dinner, recognizing all our volunteers that are on our wonderful committees and commissions that help, help the city, obviously, that's volunteer for all of them. And so we put a, put a little event on to appreciate that. I did kind of change the format this year, looking to have the council member who represents that, the liaison, you know, call up the members and present, present them. So I've gotten some good feedback that that sounds like a good idea, so we'll, we'll go with that. And then we'll, we'll have to make a one change because Councilman Gaylord's able to attend, which is great. So we'll put that together. And then, last but not least, we are coming up, city attorney's contract is coming up in six months, November of 2025. We had brought that item in front of the council during the review and, and talked about renewal of the contract. And the comment was to bring it back when it's closer to coming time for that, for that term to be up. And so I'm looking to get some direction as to when exactly we would like to do that. We're six months out now.
Mr., well, I'm sorry, Ms. Adams, do you have a question? And then Mr. Frampton?
My question was on something else.
All right, Mr. Frampton?
What's our options?
So options for city attorney, we can dismiss the city attorney, which I don't recommend, but that's a council decision. Or we could, his, his contract, when it, when his term comes to an end, it's, you know, it's not as if he's not an employee, he's just not without a contract. And so it would renew until the council took a negative action for his employment status, at which time then we would find a new city attorney.
I think at the time, when we hired last time, there wasn't a, a big response on, on the position. And I'm curious of what the response would be now if we put it back out again.
Is that a question or is a statement?
It's a statement.
Okay. Now, I, I didn't know if you were looking for me to answer that question.
That would be my suggestion.
All right, thank you. Ms. Adams?
Still on a different topic, so I can wait if you'd like.
Okay. Well, if anyone else has any questions on that topic?
Yeah, just looking for some direction. Do we want to put that on a future council agenda, renew the contract, or do we not want to do that?
I think we need to talk about it.
I think we need to have the discussion. So I think in order to have the discussion, it needs to be on the agenda.
On the agenda, yes.
Sounds good. We will put it on a future agenda item.
Okay. Now, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. And I only bring it up because the mayor reminded me, as you said, oh, you're making a video. And I was just curious, I know, something I think I've brought up pretty much every couple months since I've been up here. Where are we at with improving city communications? You had talked about a video. At this point, it was almost three years ago. So I'm just curious in general.
We are, we have a script. We have a team that's ready to put it together, and we hope to have a video out shortly.
Am I going to be asking this question?
I, I hope not. We, we actually have a very good script put together. Should be about a three, three and a half minute video of the city of West Melbourne. And that'll be our, our, our launching point into some videoettes of the different departments.
That was going to be my next question, is what's the long-term plan, knowing that for some residents, this is a great way to get information about the city?
Yeah, I mean, once we, you know, we're, we're trying to do kind of an overview of the city with some, some great shots, some working scenes, and then kind of just an overview of the city. And then we'll go into different departments and start doing three-minute videos of each department.
Are we going to be highlighting different things around our city? For example, things like our, our park that we're all really proud of, but also different amenities, things that residents, like if I were a new resident coming in, that would be something. I know we have our new resident packet of information, but I'm just wondering, because I'm also thinking about, as the mayor presents at the League of Cities next month, I know multiple cities over the past few years have brought videos or other media with them.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it puts you on a timeline.
I don't know if it'll be ready June 6th. We can try our best. But hopefully, we get an initial video there. We will be showing off things. One of them, the, the water plant. That's an amenity I, I like. I don't know if, you know, that'll, how that'll go with the public, but it's not, it's not as exciting as a park. But we certainly have a good, a good script put together. Team has done really well with it. We just need to get, get it put together and get it out and edit it.
He said it won't be ready by the 6th. It's a good thing the meeting's on the 9th.
Oh, June 9th. That's three, that's three more working days. That could, that could happen.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have one. We had, we have a, a one on CD, and it was for economic development for West Melbourne, don't we? Yes. So we have one that we did, but I'm sure it's, you know, it's, yeah, it is quite good. So we have a template to start from.
It's on CD.
Well, it's outdated now, but it still was pretty good for its time, and it was, yeah, it was done very well. So, okay, all right. Mr. Carey?
Thank you. As you probably know, the legislative session was extended for the lack of a budget. There, it's a joint resolution that they can only consider, I think it's either seven or nine bills. You know, the, the flip side of that is that any of those bills can obviously become a vehicle for amendments. And one of the things that's been proposed as an amendment is the CRA bill to go on Senate Bill 110. So if you've been following that, even though the bill itself didn't pass, it could get amended onto another bill, and 110 appears to be the vehicle for that. And we'll see where that goes. The last attempt to amend it sunsetted CRAs at 2045, didn't allow new projects unless the new project would be completed by 2045. So, you know, that's something to keep an eye on if you're interested. And the other thing, just a quick reminder to make sure that you consider doing your Form 1 and ethics training requirements. The ethics training, as has been noted, will be at the Florida League of Cities Conference, if you're going to that. You can also do it online. And I got my email this morning for the Form 1. I don't know if you all did too, but that's, that was a direct email from the, the Division of Ethic, or excuse me, the Ethics Administration. And it used to be that it came from the county, the supervisor of elections. Now it's coming directly from the state. So just keep an eye out for that. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I wanted to make a comment on the, the additional curbs that are on 192 that we talked about, that are between the driving lane and the, and the curb lane. So I understand that is now part of Vision Zero. And of course, I, yeah, so I do absolutely support Vision Zero. In fact, I asked the chief and thinks about that for something special to say. I was not expecting curbs between the driving lane and the bike lane. It's like, I don't know where that came from, but I know it wasn't us, and people who post on social media think it's us. But anyway, so I just wanted to, thank you for letting me know that that was part of Vision Zero. And, and since I support that, I guess I need to be quiet about it. But I, I sure don't see that going anywhere. I know we're going to get a lot more feedback on that. But anyway, any more comments?
Just one, I mean, they're only putting it on to one side?
No, it'll be both sides. They're just.
Mayor, my lights on.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. In terms of the 192 project, I don't know about the rest of council, but I've had neighbors and people in the city asking about, when is the project going to be done? Why is the city doing this? I love or hate the different crosswalk lights and all of the wonderful feedback that comes with that. Can we include in the next weekly roundup or something that goes out to our residents? I just pulled up the link from the Florida Transportation that linked to the project, that linked to the person to ask questions or give feedback to. That's where I've been redirecting anyone that's asking me about the project, because I try to answer as many questions about it as I can, but at the end of the day, it is not our project. Can we find some way to help our residents understand that?
Yeah, we, we put that in the roundup a couple months back when the intersection of.
Yes, but things are being put in now that people are seeing.
No, a very good point. We're, we're happy to do that. That was the last big influx of calls to City Hall was when the Hollywood intersection, the, the double laning to go west on 192 was just a disaster. And so we were pointing people at the right direction of where to, where to voice those concerns. And so we're, we're happy to do that again. The, the project is, seems to be way behind schedule from what originally was their target date. And for me, I, you know, my, my issue is just a lack of progress. You know, it's one thing to have a construction project. When, when things are happening all the time, you can understand it, but it seems like, you know, a week goes by between improvements made on 192, and it just doesn't seem right. But it's a state project, and we're happy to point people in that direction.
Thank you.
Ms. Volz? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I, lots of questions.
Adams, go ahead.
This one's for the city attorney, if you don't mind, sir. Can you give us a quick update? I know I had called you about the bill that was being signed in regards to fluoride, since the city has their water plant coming forward. So I, I thought just for the sake of council information and for our residents.
Yeah, so a few months ago, we were discussing the water plant, and the issue of fluoride came up, and there was some spirited discussion here. The state just passed a bill, and the governor has signed it banning fluoride additives in the water in the state of Florida. So at this time, obviously, there, you know, any given session, they could repeal that and, and start allowing it again. But at this time, the state has, has made it so that local governments do not have the discretion to add fluoride.
Decision we don't have to make?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Bentley?
Thank you. Is there any actual evidence? Thank you. Is there any actual evidence that you're aware of that those raised surfaces between the bike lane and the car lanes are actually an advantage to the bike rider? Because I worry about my tire hitting that, and you go over into a car without the bike.
I, I will defer to the state on that, but they are very passionate about them, and you do see them going in.
So they must have, someone's got evidence somewhere that shows that that's a better thing?
Their, you know, their big push is pedestrian and bike safety. And so they focus on, 192 is, does not have a good pedestrian safety record.
Well, if anybody comes across any evidence, if they can email me, let me know. I'm going to look it up. I'll Google it, but.
Can give you the contact information?
I don't want to call anybody. I just, I'll get them on the phone, unfortunately.
I will share. Apparently, these, these lane changes are supposed to have a calming effect on drivers. That's, that's what it says in the reports.
Along with the narrower lanes.
If you feel like that is calming to you as a driver.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any other comments for the good of the order here? All right. We are adjourned.